Thank you, everyone. Welcome to today's work session. We're going to start the meeting off a little different today. We have Girl Scout troop 4858 here to receive a proclamation. So I'm going to go to the front there, read the proclamation, and ask you all to join me.
Oh, okay, up to the podium.
Y'all ready? All right. Whereas March 12th marks the 111th anniversary of Girl Scouts in the USA, 111-year anniversary, wow, founded in 1912 by Juliette Gordon Lowe in Savannah, Georgia, whose life mission was to build girls of courage, confidence, and character. Can tell that's all of you. And whereas Girl Scouts is recognized as a national leader in providing the best leadership development experience in the world for girls with programs that speak to the strengths of each girl and are backed by more than 100 years of experience and expertise in the field. And whereas in Girl Scouts, girls develop their leadership potential through activities that enable them to discover their values, skills, and the world around them, connecting with others in a multicultural environment. And whereas Girl Scouts offers hands-on, girl-led, girl-centered learning in STEM, the outdoors, entrepreneurship, and abundant opportunities to develop invaluable life skills, helping all girls take the lead early and often. And whereas Only Girl Scouts offers girls a one-of-a-kind opportunity to become a Gold Award Girl Scout by engaging in leadership at the highest levels while addressing an issue they feel passionately about. And whereas Girl Scouts Gold Award, the highest honor a Girl Scout can earn, acknowledges each recipient's power and dedication to not only bettering herself but to making the world a better place for others. And whereas today, more than 50 million American women are Girl Scout alumni and 2.6 million girls and adult volunteers are active members. And whereas in partnership with more than 9,000 adult members, Girl Scouts North Carolina Coastal Pine serves over 26,000 girl members in 41 central and eastern North Carolina counties, including our own Wake County. And whereas our community represents every race, ethnicity, income level, sexual orientation, ability, and religion, Girl Scouts is committed to including all girls and empowering them to make our community and the world a better place. Now therefore do I, Marianne Baldwin, Mayor of the City of Raleigh, do hereby proclaim Sunday, March 12th through Saturday, March 18th, in the City of Raleigh as, say it with me, Girl Scout Week. Yes. Thank you so much for being here with us. And let's all applaud the Girl Scout movement and Girl Scouts in recognition of this girl-led, all-girls space where girls thrive and develop their talents and leadership skills. Let's hear it for them. I'm going to ask you all to come down and get a photo. And so all have a photo together. And if you want to go with the proclamation. We're all present? All right. So that was fun. Thank you all for being here. And now we start the rest of the stuff. The meeting has been called to order. And our first item of business is transit fare strategies. We'll ask David Eitman to come up.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council, David Eitman, Transportation, Transit. So today, we will be talking about transit fare strategies. Just to reflect for just a second, it's hard to believe three years ago, yesterday, our world got turned upside down. That was Friday the 13th in 2020. And I remember that day like so many, sometimes very great events and sometimes tragic events that stick in your mind. And so certainly that is one of them. But today, we're going to be talking about a little bit about Go Raleigh's background, our financial situation currently, our fare structure pre-COVID, policy goals and objectives that we might want to think about, benchmarking or what are our peer agencies doing, a little bit about federal funds that we received, and then at the end, some takeaway and options. So some of this may be redundant. Many of you may know a lot about Go Raleigh or not much at all. But Go Raleigh itself is operated by a contractor, TransDev, currently. And we are transitioning to a new contractor next month, April 23rd. But we operate 33 fixed routes. Four of those are contracted. We have about 116 buses, which 70% of those are low or no emission, CNG or electric. The remainder are still diesel. We currently have about 180 operators operate about 16 million miles a year. That was in '21. And actually, before '21, we were well above that. We've actually reduced service during COVID. We haven't fully recovered yet. We are experiencing a shortage of operators currently. However, that is recovering, but recovering a little bit slower than we want. But we are getting there. And we're actually at about ridership of 85% to 90% of our pre-COVID levels. So when you think about that, that's not bad considering that we're actually providing less service, but we're about 90% of our ridership than where we were pre-COVID. The Go Raleigh Access system, probably not as known as much as what people see on a daily basis. You see the Go Raleigh buses on the street, very recognizable. But Go Raleigh Access is just an incredible program for the City of Raleigh. And it's actually a federal requirement as well. But that program provides transportation to persons with disabilities that can't normally ride a regular fixed route transit bus. So under that particular program, we actually have 20 vehicles that we operate with MV Transportation. That contract will be transitioning out at the end of this fiscal year. And we'll also, RATP Dev will be acquiring that contract as well. We have, again, 20 Go Raleigh Access vehicles. But the majority of our trips, 90% of our trips are done by taxis here within the City of Raleigh, or really within our service area, which even goes outside of the City of Raleigh. We do about 1,500 trips a day. And as you can see, during the pandemic, we actually had a small dip in ridership. So we were about 350,000 a year. We went slightly down in 2021. But we have seen tremendous growth as we have started to exit that pandemic period. And we'll talk more about that a little bit later. Wake County Transit Plan, so obviously Wake County Transit Plan funded by the half-cent sales tax, funded or approved by referendum in 2016. Currently, that provides about $13.5 million to our operating budget. That particular revenue source has provided funding to improve or actually start 17 routes. So we have 17 routes that are either new or have increased frequency. And while we're thinking about just the operations side, not thinking about capital such as BRT or bus shelters or things of that nature, but really about the service on the street, that transit plan has also, so far, expended about $48 million for buses. And we have another $52 million program through FY30. So we are very fortunate in that we have one of the better fleets probably in the nation as far as our average age, as well as the technology that we deploy. We will have about 230 operators and 55 maintenance technicians by 2030. So we are a growing system. Pre-pandemic, who are our riders with Go Raleigh? So in 2019, we did an onboard survey, and 82% of our riders at that time made $35,000 or less. 65% had no vehicle. And 64% of our riders rode or used Go Raleigh for work trips. And that's almost worth saying again, 64% for work trips. That is such an important facet of that transportation mode. Think about those work trips that may not be able to be performed if our services weren't available. And 43% of our riders ride six to seven days a week. So a little bit of our finances. I'm not going to read this line by line, but I did want to point out that, you know, our fixed route budget, as you can see here, we're about 43, right at a $44 million budget. That's obviously a balanced budget for our revenues and expenses. And before the pandemic, we were collecting about $3.5 million annually. So when you think about where would that $3.5 million fit into this chart? Well, those federal funds that you see at the top, that 12.9, those that would actually be reduced by the 3.5. So we are using our recovery and our CARES Act funding on the federal side to cover that hole. And we've actually been doing that since 2021. You can see a general breakdown of our expenses. Those are pretty much summed up categories. Our service contract obviously is the overwhelming, you know, most expensive portion of that. That includes labor for our fixed route services as well as maintenance to support those services. On the pair transit or access side, very much the same thing, $14 million budget. That $1 million that we were collecting pre-COVID, very much the same, federal funds, the CARES Act, and ARPA funds at $7.7 million are covering that $1 million that we are not collecting via fares currently. And again, also, our service contract, which would include MV Transportation as well as our taxi services, again, overwhelming portion of the overall budget. One note to just point out, Farefree has increased our utilization of our pair transit system tremendously, as I alluded to a little bit earlier in their presentation. We saw a dip from 19 to 20 physical years in number of trips. That's when we were in the heart of the pandemic. But from that time period forward, we've seen some tremendous growth in the pair transit program. You can see FY21, 650,000. And that's a monthly invoice for our taxis, up to about $1 million dollars average for FY23. And actually, we just threw in our last invoice because it was hopefully a bit of an anomaly, but almost 1.3 million. So what are some of the physical pressures that we're seeing within transit? The first bullet is not a physical pressure unless you think long term. So our federal recovery funds have been programmed to balance the FY24 budget. And so that is without fares. So FY24, we're using those funds to make sure that we stay whole and we have a solid budget. But as we think about moving forward, and when we get into out years, suspended fare revenue will have an impact. Inflation will accumulate or has been accumulating since the pandemic started, and we've been masking that with these federal funds. Our new contract structure unfortunately is more. But quite honestly, due to the pandemic and some of the forces within transit and transit contracts, our old contract structure, no one will bid on it, or we cannot get competition. So this new contract structure that we went to...
So that was fun. Thank you all for being here. And now we start the rest of the stuff. The meeting has been called to order, and our first item of business is transit fare strategies. We'll ask David Eitman to come up.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council, David Eitman, Transportation, Transit. So today, we will be talking about transit fare strategies. Just to reflect for just a second, it's hard to believe three years ago yesterday, our world got turned upside down. That was Friday the 13th in 2020. And I remember that day like so many, sometimes very great events and sometimes tragic events that stick in your mind. And so certainly, that is one of them. But today, we're going to be talking about a little bit about Go Raleigh's background, our financial situation currently, our fare structure pre-COVID, policy goals and objectives that we might want to think about, benchmarking, or what are our peer agencies doing? A little bit about federal funds that we received, and then at the end, some takeaway and options. So some of this may be redundant. Many of you may know a lot about Go Raleigh or not much at all. But Go Raleigh itself is operated by a contractor, TransDev currently, and we are transitioning to a new contractor next month, April 23rd. But we operate 33 fixed routes. Four of those are contracted. We have about 116 buses, which 70% of those are low or no emission, CNG or electric. The remainder are still diesel. We currently have about 180 operators, operate about 16 million miles a year. That was in '21. And actually, before '21, we were well above that. We've actually reduced service during COVID. We haven't fully recovered yet. We are experiencing a shortage of operators currently. However, that is recovering, but recovering a little bit slower than we want, but we are getting there. And we're actually at about ridership of 85% to 90% of our pre-COVID levels. So when you think about that, that's not bad considering that we're actually providing less service, but we're about 90% of our ridership than where we were pre-COVID. The Go Raleigh Access system, probably not as known as much as what people see on a daily basis. You see the Go Raleigh buses on the street, very recognizable. But Go Raleigh Access is just an incredible program for the city of Raleigh, and it's actually a federal requirement as well. But that program provides transportation to persons with disabilities that can't normally ride a regular fixed route transit bus. So under that particular program, we actually have 20 vehicles that we operate with MV Transportation. That contract will be transitioning out at the end of this fiscal year. And we'll also, RATP Dev will be acquiring that contract as well. We have, again, 20 Go Raleigh Access vehicles. But the majority of our trips, 90% of our trips are done by taxis here within the city of Raleigh, or really within our service area, which even goes outside of the city of Raleigh. We do about 1,500 trips a day. And as you can see during the pandemic, we actually had a small dip in ridership. So we were about 350,000 a year. We went slightly down in 2021. But we have seen tremendous growth as we have started to exit that pandemic period. And we'll talk more about that a little bit later. Wake County Transit Plan. So obviously, Wake County Transit Plan funded by the half-cent sales tax, funded or approved by referendum in 2016. Currently, that provides about $13.5 million to our operating budget. That particular revenue source has provided funding to improve or actually start 17 routes. So we have 17 routes that are either new or have increased frequency. And while we're thinking about just the operations side, not thinking about capital such as BRT or bus shelters or things of that nature, but really about the service on the street, that transit plan has also, so far, expended about $48 million for buses. And we have another $52 million program through FY '30. So we are very fortunate in that we have one of the better fleets probably in the nation as far as our average age, as well as the technology that we deploy. We will have about 230 operators and 55 maintenance technicians by 2030. So we are a growing system. Pre-pandemic, who are our riders with Go Raleigh? So in 2019, we did an onboard survey, and 82% of our riders at that time made $35,000 or less. 65% had no vehicle. And 64% of our riders rode or used Go Raleigh for work trips. And that's almost worth saying again, 64% for work trips. That is such an important facet of that transportation mode. Think about those work trips that may not be able to be performed if our services weren't available. And 43% of our riders ride six to seven days a week. So a little bit of our finances. I'm not going to read this line by line, but I did want to point out that, you know, our fixed route budget, as you can see here, we're about 43, right at a $44 million budget. That's obviously a balanced budget for our revenues and expenses. And before the pandemic, we were collecting about $3.5 million annually. So when you think about where would that $3.5 million fit into this chart? Well, those federal funds that you see at the top, that 12.9, those that would actually be reduced by the 3.5. So we are using our recovery and our CARES Act funding on the federal side to cover that hole, and we've actually been doing that since 2021. You can see a general breakdown of our expenses. Those are pretty much summed up categories. Our service contract, obviously, is the overwhelming, you know, most expensive portion of that. That includes labor for our fixed route services, as well as maintenance to support those services. On the pair transit or access side, very much the same thing, $14 million budget. That $1 million that we were collecting pre-COVID, very much the same. Federal funds, the CARES Act, and ARPA funds at $7.7 million are covering that $1 million that we are not collecting via fares currently. And again, also, our service contract, which would include MV Transportation, as well as our taxi services, again, overwhelming portion of the overall budget. One note to just point out, fare-free has increased our utilization of our pair transit system tremendously, as I alluded to a little bit earlier in their presentation. We saw a dip from 19 to 20 physical years in number of trips. That's when we were in the heart of the pandemic. But from that time period forward, we've seen some tremendous growth in the pair transit program. You can see FY '21, $650,000, and that's a monthly invoice for our taxis, up to about $1 million average for FY '23. And actually, we just threw in our last invoice because it was hopefully a bit of anomaly, but almost $1.3 million. So what are some of the physical pressures that we're seeing within transit? The first bullet is not a physical pressure unless you think long-term. So our federal recovery funds have been programmed to balance the FY '24 budget. And so that is without fares. So FY '24, we're using those funds to make sure that we stay whole and we have a solid budget. But as we think about moving forward, and when we get into out-years, suspended fare revenue will have an impact. Inflation will accumulate, or has been accumulating since the pandemic started, and we've been masking that with these federal funds. Our new contract structure, unfortunately, is more. But quite honestly, due to the pandemic and some of the forces within transit and transit contracts, our old contract structure, no one will bid on it, or we cannot get competition. So this new contract structure that we went to does have a lot of competition, but just by its nature, it is more expensive. We've also seen unprecedented labor cost, especially on our pair transit side. And our federal recovery funds will be depleted, we're estimating sometime in FY 2025. If I had to say when in '25, probably around mid-year, mid-physical year, that is. So other considerations, there wasn't a nice place to put these, but just things that we need to think about. The Wake Transit model, certainly, that particular budget, which funds all of our services and capital projects and BRT through FY '30, that particular model, as agencies do not return to fares, is looking at about a $32 million shortfall. So in order to make that work, we push projects beyond 2030 so that we have enough funds, obviously, to fund what we program up to 2030. So we are looking at about a $32 million impact to the Wake Transit model. In November of '22, the Transit Authority, the Raleigh Transit Authority, did vote 62 in favor of reinstating fares. And we believe, or it seems that their decision was based upon comments by bus drivers that were in favor of reinstating fares, as well as we informed them of some of our physical challenges as we got to FY '25 and beyond as well. A little bit of, I'm not going to go into detail on this, but if you look at our pre-COVID fares, $1.25 for a single ride. A day pass, that's unlimited rides for $2.50. And then certainly, we had weekly passes and monthly passes, or 31-day passes, and then discounted fares for seniors, children, and also youth as well. So thinking about the fares collectively, 32% of our fares, or 32% of, I'm sorry, of our annual ridership actually rode free under our existing fare structure pre-COVID. So again, that was senior citizens, children 12 and under, teens 13 to 18, through our youth go-pass. We also had go-pass employer and university programs that individuals rode at no cost, but those actually entities actually paid us for those rides at a reduced rate. And we also offered entities a 25% discount for bulk purchases of day passes. And then another 12% of our total ridership rode at half fare, and that included persons with disabilities and Medicare cardholders, which is also a federal requirement. So looking at that, those discounted passes that I was talking about, we've sold to a number of nonprofit agencies and actually for-profit agencies in 2019. Mostly, our for-profit agencies were medical facilities, things of that nature, and then certainly, a lot of nonprofits. But about 400,000 trips in 2019 came from those passes. And you can see some of our major purchasers of those passes on the slide. So again, some other considerations under this category. Go Raleigh currently eliminates or abates fares for about 40% of its customers pre-COVID. Current cost to collect fares for us is about $350,000 annual. So that includes armored car service, staff time, things of that nature. So that's about 10% of our revenue generation on the fixed route side, where most of that cost actually resides. But that cost is somewhat fixed, so we can actually collect about $3.5 million for the same as we can collect $6 or $7 million. So if that number were to grow, that actual collection cost would not grow tremendously. Now, I would have to do a disclaimer. This does not include all of our capital equipment, and our capital equipment, such as fare boxes, is part of our bus cost. So that particular cost is not in the $350,000. The $350,000 number is actual operating cost annually in order for us to collect fares. And then something that's a strange FTA rule. Once we reach 100 peak buses, we're no longer eligible for operating assistance with federal funds. So we're working, or will be working with Wake Transit to determine how we deal with that in the future as Wake Transit is the element that will push us over the 100 peak buses as we move forward. I say that not to be an alarmist. I just say that that's a federal requirement, and we're looking for ways to make sure that we stay, you know, very healthy and have a long-term solution to that particular federal requirement. So policy goals and objectives. So, you know, what are the policy goals and objectives that some agencies have in order to, you know, go fare-free? Certainly, for us, in the pandemic, it began as a way to keep our drivers safe, keep our passengers safe. But certainly, you know, there are other policy goals out there. Ensure transit is accessible and equitable. Reduce barriers to use of transit, enhance operational efficiencies, increase desirability of transit, increase ridership, that's one you hear nationally for sure, and improve the transit experience for riders and operators. So each one of those has some outcomes, and some of those outcomes, obviously, are for multiple of those goals or objectives. But for accessibility, reduction in family transportation cost, and then potentially not needing a vehicle. So having accessibility, but also making things more economically accessible. Reducing barriers, remove uncertainty around cost and payment methods. I would say that whenever, even when I travel, and transit's pretty much all I've done my whole life, that it's still a little bit of a, you're sort of like, okay, what's the payment? How do, I've got to make sure I've got everything squared away before I get on the bus. And so when you have that fare-free environment, that's not there. You just board the bus, and as long as you know your origin and your destination, you're good to go. Operational efficiencies, when you do not pay a fare on a bus, it's just faster. It's just a reality. Increase, again, increase desirability, which also goes back to ease of rider access, increase ridership, eliminates cost impediments, as well as easy for visitors and occasional riders to use, as I just mentioned. If you go somewhere, you really don't have to think, or if we have a visitor, they don't have to think to board. And then, again, finally, the user experience eliminates potential fare disputes for operators and removes that anxiety for not only the operator, but also for the consumer. So what are some other systems doing? Kansas City, I think, has been in the papers or in articles quite a bit nationally. They actually went fare-free in 2020. And currently, the city of Kansas City is funding half of their revenue that they were collecting from fares, and the other half is coming from CARES and ARPA funds. That does include all of their fixed route services, but they are charging for micro-transit services within their service area. The next one, and actually, the last one that I have in text here, is Town of Chapel Hill, just because they're our neighbor. They went fare-free way back in 2002. And their revenue is actually made up from UNC Chapel Hill University, the Town of Chapel Hill, and the Town of Carrboro. And they also use the Orange County half-cent sales tax, much like we use part of the Wake County sales tax to pay our operating. And that includes all of their services, including pair transit. So some of our other peers around the triangle, Go Triangle's looking at returning fares potentially by July 1, but that's yet to be seen. Other systems, such as Cary and Go Durham, seem to be taking a bit of a, more of a wait-and-see currently. But unfortunately, I don't have any more detailed information than that. It's not that I didn't try. It's just everyone has their own kind of path and process for this currently. And so what, you know, what does our relief funding look like? So at the beginning of the pandemic, or not at the beginning of the pandemic, but through the pandemic, we were allocated ARPA funds as well, as well as, I'm sorry, CARES Act funds. And pretty much all of that funding has been allocated to our operating budget. We were allocated $51 million, and that is, again, pretty much all for operating. We have used that relief funding since FY '21 to balance our budget, and we are anticipating that that will be depleted sometime in FY '25. So a combination of rising costs and depletion of relief funding is expected to result in FY '26 general fund deficit of potentially $8 to $12 million. And again, that comes from fares, that comes from inflation, and that comes from contract change that was necessary in order for us to have an operator that could collective bargain with our two local unions, being amalgamated Transit Union and Teamsters Union. So takeaways and options, certainly, as we think about being fare-free, there's most definitely some great positives. Trip generation, reduction, elimination of fare collection cost, potential decrease in delays because of boardings that you don't have to put in a fare, decrease in disputes over fares. That's a stressor on a driver. Whenever you have somebody that has a fare dispute, everybody has a stressor on their job. And for an operator, those fare disputes are stressors. Increased accessibility and equity reduces barriers and simplifies access. You know, what are some of the negatives out there, though? There's always, you know, the flip side to that. So certainly, we're looking at general fund impacts in '26, while this is not the total driver by any stretch of the imagination to that '26 impact, but it is just one of the pieces. Misalignment with regional partners, fare policy. So what are other partners going to do? And regardless of what happens, whether we stay free or collect fares, we're going to make sure that we do have that regional coordination. Impacts on Wake Transit Plan, financial model, and a higher number of non-destination riders can increase negative rider and operator interactions and feedback. And some riders can feel uncomfortable. And certainly, we have seen a higher-than-normal operator turnover during the pandemic. And whether this is directly related, we have no direct correlation to that. But just knowing that we have had higher turnover, but that has gotten better, and we are hiring more operators, so I always like to end on a positive note. Yes. So what are our options? And this is the last slide, if you're wondering. We can remain fare-free. So certainly, that's an option. It does come with consequences and decisions further down the road. We can return to fare collections and then pilot a fare-free service on weekends only. That's something that was thought about regionally and was pitched throughout the triangle to different systems. And then the pandemic hit, and it really wasn't a thought anymore at that point. Develop a universal basic mobility, preloaded cash card program. So what is that exactly? That's where we would, you know, other pilots or other cities, such as LA Metro, things of that nature, that have piloted that. You have a card that might be sponsored by, I'll just, I don't, anyway, a large credit card company that has that card. And then you could actually load it with a predetermined amount of revenue or per month, depending upon someone's eligibility for that card. And it can be used for transit, bike share, scooter share, actually, car share, electric vehicle charging, because in certain areas, you do have to pay for your electrical, you know, electric use. So all of those items could be used off of one card. It's not something that we have available currently, but something that a lot of, not a lot of cities, but cities have piloted and have shown some success. We could implement mobile ticketing and fare capping. That's actually ready. We had that program ready, and it was about to be deployed. We were going to do our press release, and Friday the 13th of 2020 hit, literally. That's how close we were to deploying that mobile ticketing program with the fare capping and all of those assets and ease of boarding that goes with that. And then we could develop income-based fare-free pass programs that maybe use existing income-based eligibility requirements. And we could coordinate with nonprofits or other entities in order to determine, you know, how we might be able to deploy that. I'm sorry, two more slides. I'll be real quick. Other things to consider if fare collection resumes are all the things that I talked about earlier. We want to make sure that we're coordinating regionally, looking at our existing pass programs. If we're going to do this, we want to make sure we do it right, because we've got to think about this. It's not pre-COVID anymore. We're in a different world at this point in transit. So we really want to make sure, if we charge fares, that we do it right. And then timing on that. Staff training and equipment readiness takes time. You know, we've got 100 and some buses that we have to recalibrate every fare box. We have software to deploy. We have, you know, lots of things that have to happen in order to spin that up. So that's going to take time. We would say that if somebody wanted to return to fares and actually have a program ready, January of 2024 would probably be something reasonable. Could we do it faster? Yes. It depends on what was, you know, what the wants and needs are. But I just wanted to put a timeline out there just to state that that's not something that can, we can flip a switch on. That does take some time to prep for. So with that, I appreciate everybody's time, and I know that was a bit long, but thank you very much.
Thank you, David. What questions do we have? Councilmember Branch, and then Fort.
Fort was first. All right. Well, you said the R-line, which was fare-free before it was stopped pre-COVID. Can you share some of the challenges that we had on that? I mean, I was on council at the time, but I think maybe the mayor...
I can, because I used to ride it.
Yeah, I think the mayor, but could you...
Just about every day.
Share challenges that we may have had, or things we may have could have done better with the R-line?
The R-line...
And how many years did it run?
I'm sorry?
And also, how many years did it run?
Wow, that ran for over a decade. We started that program, I can find out. But anyway, it ran for about a decade before it changed into what was deployed just before COVID. And then we pretty much deployed it and then stopped it because of travel patterns downtown during the heart of COVID. But certainly, you know, the R-line has had its challenges over time as well. Whenever you have a free service and that service doesn't have some, you know, basically, I think about it like an airline ticket. If you get to the airport, you don't have to pay for your flight, but you still have to have a ticket to get through the gate. And so whenever you don't have that basic element in place, there are other policies, as well as preventive things, that you have to have in order to deter non-destination riders that honestly, quite honestly, all they're doing is they're looking for somewhere either cool, they're looking for somewhere that may be warm. And so that's not a bad thing, but it's just you also have to control that because within a transportation environment, whether it's Go Raleigh Station or on our buses, we really want people to have an origin and a destination, and that's why they use our service. And when that starts to break down, other challenges start to occur. And so I would think, reflecting back on the R-line, that did occur, and we've seen that throughout our network currently as well.
Okay. And just two other questions real quick. You mentioned net step. Some of the positives was buses being on time. Even though we're fare-free, aren't we still having challenges with some of our buses still meeting on-time marks?
I'd say overall, that we're doing pretty well with on-time performance. Sometimes, we're our own worst enemy, because if we actually leave early, that's a mark against us as for not being on time. But we're probably, if we actually took out those early departures or in the, you know, close to 90 percentile, 85 percentile with our penalizing ourselves, even if we leave 30 seconds early, that's still an early in our book, because, you know, timetable says, as long as you're there at that time, you shall catch the bus. And so we do penalize ourselves for that. But I would say that generally, you know, we're pretty, you know, we do well with on-time performance. And we weren't doing bad, you know, pre-COVID either. But, yeah.
Right. So basically, pre-COVID and now, as far as on-time rates, is basically kind of the same?
It's not a huge difference yet. I would say that that's fair.
All right. And my last question is, in order to bring fares back, if we were to decide, wouldn't we also have to do an equity study? Have we done that, or started that process?
That process is currently underway. So you are correct. We would have to do a fare equity analysis. And so whenever we change our fare, FTA says that we, there can't be, you know, there's always going to be impacts. You touch anything, there's going to be impacts. We just want the impacts to make sure that they're equitably distributed for everyone. Is everyone feeling the same impact? We do not want to, you know, impact a neighborhood more than another across our network. So, but yes, sir, that is underway.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fort?
You kind of touched on a little bit of what I was going to ask. So I know I've had conversations with bus operators, and their major challenge is safety concerns as relates to keeping the fares free and dealing with the parts of the population that ride and don't get off. Are you keeping any data on if there's been an increase in criminal activity on the buses? Are y'all sort of tracking that? Are you keeping any data or tracking? Are you keeping any data or tracking maybe ridership from other folks decreasing because of fare-free, but more so because of the issues on the bus? I mean, are you, are you tracking any of those issues?
So the, the issues, we did start tracking during COVID and we report those to the Transit Authority on a monthly or quarterly basis. I'd have to check with staff, but we do report that. So, well, we do have those figures. I, I would say that it was further into COVID that we actually started tracking that. So we don't have like a two or three-year period of trend data to show, but we do have some data. And so we'd be happy to provide anything if that would be helpful. I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't feel confident at this moment trying to determine whether that was increasing or decreasing as we stand now in a more of a post-COVID environment. But we are tracking that as well. And the second part, my apologies, you were asking about?
Well, it was basically data again, so.
Just ridership?
Ridership and also, but criminal activity, like have you been able to track and see if there's an increase in criminal activity since the fares have been free on the buses?
Yeah, so again, those, those incidents, we do track. Again, I'm not quite comfortable yet trying to determine exactly what that trend data tells us. There is, we don't have a correlation between ridership and that data, but certainly, we've got ridership throughout the pandemic, pre-pandemic, and now where we are. And you can see the curves and how that ridership has, has changed and grown, quite honestly. And well, I would say that's a pretty good statement. It's changed and grown. We have certain segments of our ridership that really have not rebounded as well as others. We have some routes that are 60 to 70% of pre-pandemic levels and we have some other routes that are 120% of pre-pandemic levels. So our ridership has just changed over the last three years is the best way to put it. That doesn't mean that some of those other routes that aren't now, aren't as productive, aren't important, but our ridership truly has changed across the entire GoRaleigh or GoRaleigh network.
Any other questions? I have a couple, so don't leave yet. I think it was Councilmember Jones and then Harrison.
I was just wondering if you could speak to the two on the Transit Authority who were against raising fares and maybe their reasons for not wanting to raise fares.
I certainly wouldn't want to speak for them. I would say that David Eaton's opinion is that they were very interested in making sure that there was equity and accessibility to the transit network.
Thank you.
From what I was told by them, it was equity issue and accessibility in those exact terms.
Thank you. Councilmember Harrison?
Yeah, just two items. The first is a question. You had mentioned how if we have more than 100 peak bus routes, that then we lose federal operating assistance eligibility. And I'm sorry, where are we at this point? What is our number for peak buses?
We're at about 87 peak buses currently.
Okay.
So we've got a while. We've got, you know, some years ahead before we have to worry about that.
Do you have a sense of when we might get there?
I think the last check, 27, 28? Yeah, 27, 28 timeframe. I would say 28, just off the top of my head, but because that's projected in the Wake Transit Plan 2030, you know, outlook for implementations. Again, I don't want to be an alarmist on that. There are ways to mitigate that within our existing financial structures with Wake Transit. To us, in the federal world, a dollar has two identities. It has an operating identity and it has a capital identity. In Wake Transit Plan, Wake Transit Plan really doesn't care. A dollar's a dollar. So there are ways that we can work with Wake Transit to, to say, hey, well, we've got five capital dollars, can we take five operating dollars? And Wake Transit says yes. So, I mean, I don't want to be alarmist on that and we haven't worked out those details yet. But again, that is a federal requirement, so we just wanted to make sure that people were aware that those types of our issues and discussions are out there.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful. And the other, I just comment I wanted to make. I love the idea of something, some kind of card or item. I think you referred to it as universal basic mobility that would connect across our different transit services. So whether it's a scooter or a bike, you know, if we were to require some kind of a card to use with buses. I know Taipei does something like that and that really, you know, just connects all these different modes. Myself, I've gotten confused over the years with the various scooter services. I had one app and then it wasn't in my area anymore and then I tried to get another and I eventually gave up because it was too hard. And it wasn't that hard, but it just became just enough that I said, oh, never mind, I'm going to walk or, you know, figure out another way. So I think that's a neat thing that we should be looking at.
Any other questions before I launch in?
I just, I just have, do you have a question? I just have one question as a follow-up about the peak buses, 100 buses. What was our peak pre-COVID?
So we're actually down 13% currently. So we were 87 pre-COVID and so we're about 13% off of that currently as far as service hours goes. I can't really translate that into number of buses, but it's less than 87. But, you know, as soon as we ramp back up and we're looking to do that as quickly as possible, we'll be back to the 87 and then we'll be adding some services over, certainly some, some services over the next three years.
So with 15-minute headway, going back and adding, just to go back to where we're pre-COVID, is 87 during peak hours?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a couple. Thank you for this presentation. Appreciate it. I was wondering if you knew the cost to, there were a lot of ways in which pre-COVID people received reduction in fares. Do you know the cost to administer all the like determinations of those programs and stuff?
So I would break that into two categories. We have our GoRaleigh Access, which is our ADA program, which has a prescribed certification process. So ADA certification under federal transit administration is not based on any type of state or federal claim of disability or, or granting of disability status. It is truly a transit system's assessment of one's ability to access and navigate its system. And yes, so, you know, that, I would, I would say let's push that aside. And so that has, that's kind of a little bit expensive. Generally about $100 a client for us to go through all of that process to make determination. Now, when you get over to our pass programs and things of that nature, those are actually administered by the independent nonprofits or medical facilities and things of that nature generally. So we just sell the passes at a reduced rate. As far as our free, such as, let's use the Youth Go Pass per se, that's a swipe pass or an ID basically that allows them to board GoRaleigh. And a card is, at bulk is less than a dollar. So those are pretty cheap programs as well to administer.
Okay. And then another question that I had. I know that in speaking with some people on the Transit Authority that a part of their motivation to reinstate the fares was concern for driver safety. And I have a great deal of respect for that, but I was curious if other policies outside of reinstating the fares had been explored. For instance, like an end-of-the-line policy that would ask people to exit the bus rather than, to your point of having an origin and a destination?
So we do have basically round-trip policies. So you, you can board and because some individuals will use, just think of a large, major roadway that has a lot of commercial development and a lot of stoplights and a lot of traffic. So certainly, if you get on one side, you might not feel comfortable crossing the street. So you can actually ride downtown and ride back out if you wanted to, to get back to where you, you know, you were. So we allow those types of trips, but just not a full round trip per se. So those policies are in place. But as I alluded to earlier, I think that if we remain fare-free, we will look at additional policies and really think about, you know, our provision of service a little bit differently on how that's done and what type of resources are available to drivers as well as passengers and to, to really make that a great experience for everyone, I guess is the best way to put it. But we, we realize that it doesn't matter if we go fare-free or we implement fares, there's work to be done.
Councilmember Melton?
I don't have questions. I did want to maybe express my thoughts or opinions, so I was happy to go last, but I can go now.
You go.
I mean, I've been a proponent of fare-free transit since I was first elected. I've pushed the council to keep transit fare-free through COVID. I know there was at time a proposal to bring it back. I think it was like January of '21 or '22. I think when you look at the data, this is very helpful. You know, 82% of our riders make less than $35,000 a year. I don't know how we can justify bringing back fares. I really, I really don't. I think that, you know, some of the challenges such as a misalignment with our regional partners fare policy, I mean, Go Triangle pre-COVID charged fares. Chapel Hill has not charged fares for a very long time. And so that's, that's a regional partner that has had a misalignment and they've been able to make that work. I think we're seeing a national trend towards fare-free transit. DC, maybe not one of our peer cities, that wasn't on the list, but they just implemented fare-free transit in their city. Will be starting this summer. And so I don't want to go backwards, but I also don't want to just throw up a roadblock and, and vote no on bringing fares. But I'd like to be collaborative and so I hope we can get as a council to a place that can accomplish some of our goals because I know we all share the, the goal of increasing equity and access. I do think that for some of the riders who are looking for shelter or heat or, or air conditioning, we can do more to help connect those folks with the services that they need because they need housing and food and employment. And I know that's an aspirational goal, but that should be our goal anyway. And so I think that there are some ways to work around these issues. And that's just the equity piece. From the access piece, you know, I ride the bus regularly or pre-COVID, I have more places to go. It was a challenge to, we had to have exact change. It was just cash. And so I don't know who carries $1.25 in their pocket, but that's a road, that's a big barrier to a lot of folks and there's not many places you can buy a fare card. You could get them at Harris Teeter at one point, you go down to GoRaleigh. And so if we have to move back towards some sort of fare, I think the mobile pay and the cashless will be really important. You know, I think a lot of people liked the R-line for two reasons. It was free and it was frequent. And I mean, that's kind of the goal for transit, I think, increasing access and increasing frequency. So I certainly want to be collaborative. I don't want to be the stick in the mud on this issue. My preference would be to remain fare-free. I think I have more questions about forward planning. For example, what impact does this have on Bus Rapid Transit? Is there, are we allowed to have a distinction about running our regular routes fare-free and charging a fare for Bus Rapid Transit since that's more of a premium service on, only on certain areas? That's kind of where my mind goes with it, but again, I, I would like to see us not go backwards on this, especially since we know that the majority of the folks that are depending on this service are substantially, have substantial limited means. And so I hope we can find a way forward that can accomplish a lot of our shared values.
Couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you. I share those concerns. I have a couple of questions. First off, I had been contacted by a couple of drivers who said that at one point they were given radios in case of an emergency. So I know that bus driver safety was important, but those radios were taken away. And what I heard through the grapevine was that some people were using them for like just chit-chat or whatever. Can you just settle for the record what happened with the radios and whether we would consider that as an option again?
Yeah, so all vehicles have a Motorola radio and we use Wake County's truncated radio system as our radio network throughout Wake County because we travel Wendell, Zebulon, Wake Forest. And so that's our base radio system. So a radio system in that type of network can, can occur in two different environments. It can occur as an open network where everyone can talk. And so in that network, if you have 85 or 87 buses on the road, you can have a lot of chatter because you have 85 or 87 people talking at different times. And sometimes if you have something very important being said, then somebody can key a mic over an important conversation to, to say that there had been an accident or there was a stoplight in flash at a particular location, but that could have been a critical message. So we do have a CAD AVL system, computer-aided dispatch system, that allows the driver to request to talk. It goes straight to our dispatch, which is a manned dispatch. And so that dispatcher controls the traffic of, of those things that come in by priority so that he knows exactly who is calling and what the, you know, general priority is so that they can get those messages back out to, to what needs to happen. So we went from an open network, which is generally available in smaller transit systems, to a CAD AVL system network, which is a closed network where you have to contact dispatch in order to, and dispatch relays the message if required, you know, to the other buses. So that's what's going on. We generally leave those safety and security issues while we provide input to the contractors that provide those services because ultimately, that's their employees and they're in charge of the safety and security of, of their employees. So again, that was an operational decision by the contractor at that time.
Can we look at that again? Because I feel that what was communicated to me by the bus drivers is they felt safer with the open communication. And if it was being abused, then maybe what we need to do is look at training and whatnot. So I would just ask that we look at that again, mostly from a safety perspective. My second question revolves around microtransit. I know we have a contract that we're working on currently with a microtransit provider. I also saw in the presentation that Kansas City is operating fare-free but charging for microtransit.
Correct.
Have we had discussions about what we would do with microtransit?
So microtransit as a contracted service is something that will be coming before council in the very near future. We are looking at a couple of opportunities. The, the main one is some Wake Transit-funded areas that are not supportive of fixed route, but we're looking at those to, to turn those into microtransit areas. And those could be replicated in other areas as well as we learn and grow and, and kind of experiment with some different service models. There's so many, with microtransit, there's so many different service models. They all have one thing in common and that's the awesome technology that it has. But you can deploy those services, turnkey through contractor, you can provide them yourself. So there's lots of different ways that you can do that. So I guess to answer your question, it's certainly we're looking at microtransit. That will be part of a larger contract as this particular provider that we'll be coming forward with will also be taking over our pair transit software. So we do 1,500 pair transit trips a day and currently I can't see, we, we can't see those taxi trips. We can see all the trips that we self-perform because those vehicles have AVL and we know exactly where they are and we know who's on board. But when we dispatch taxi trips currently, we don't have that information. And so this particular software will allow us to have that level of information as well for all of those taxi trips, which are 90% of our total trips being performed. So we're very excited about it. Does have that microtransit component as well. So yes, we're moving forward.
Okay. To follow up on that, some, I think Jonathan had mentioned the, no, Mayor Pro Tem had mentioned the R-line. I will say toward the end, the R-line was losing a lot of ridership. It did not feel safe. There were some major issues there, but we never really addressed micromobility in the downtown region. Are we looking at that as part of this contract?
I, I think that once we deploy the contract and depending upon what that structure is, that we could look at a multitude of different options. Microtransit is, you know, what, what you hear of most. It's the first mile, last mile option. I mean, that's truly what it's about is to, is to link you to a high-capacity transit that, that, you know, is within. I mean, that's truly what it's about, is to link you to a high-capacity transit that, you know, is within your service area. So if that's the ultimate goal of it, then, you know, to link it to services that are going to other major destinations, then certainly that might be an opportunity.
Okay, my final question. Can you refresh my memory on the dollar amount that we collected from fares?
So we listed in the presentation, it's about pre-COVID, it was right at 3.5 million.
3.5 million. But yeah, the deficit, that potential deficit you're talking about is, was it eight to twelve?
Eight to twelve, that is correct.
Okay.
So we have 3.5 for fixed route, a million for pair transit, which is about 4.5. Then our other two large variables were inflation, pent-up inflation over, you know, so if you take a $40 million budget and compound it with the seven to eight percent inflation that we were looking at through the pandemic, you know, that's that number, as well as our contract structure changed as well. So we hope that that's the wrong. But, you know, we want to make sure that we're looking forward into FY26, and our financial staff have developed that model, and that popped out, yeah.
So even in reinstating fares, we would still have a gap?
That is our interpretation of where we are today. Yes, that is correct.
So we have a bigger issue?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, what?
Without fares, the gap is minimum eight million? So with, so.
So we still have an issue?
Yeah, so it's between eight or four million.
And it's a bigger, this is a bigger issue than just talking about fare-free?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Councilmember Melton?
I just wanted to add, because I didn't include this in my comments, is that I have also heard the concerns from some of our bus operators. And I, and I know we have to address those concerns, because the buses aren't going to run if the folks who run them are not willing to do that. And so we have to provide a safe environment for our riders and our operators. But I stand by my comments that I think there are creative ways around this issue. And so I'm hoping as we move into our budget decisions, it sounds like we've got some time, because we've got at least enough federal support money to get us through fiscal year '24, that we can find a way forward on these access, equity, and safety issues.
And you know, the other issue as well. How do I say this? I'm not going to say it right now.
I don't know if this is even possible, but I was just thinking, we have an affordable housing fund that, as we think of community benefits, that people can, people meaning, that want to grow, that are built in the city can donate to. Do we have the same thing for transit? That if we're growing and development is benefiting from transit, I'm specifically thinking of like Briar Creek, where I live, is there a way to ask that the development community possibly contribute to a fund that would help fill that gap?
We used to allow companies to purchase fares for their employers, employees, and that, like when you're looking at the equity issue and whatnot, that could be considered again?
That, I mean, that is correct. We did have the Go Pass program.
Yep.
And that was administered to pretty much all universities within our service area, as well as the Wake Technical Community College is, you know, huge user of that service. But yes.
And Oak City Cares.
That's correct.
So one thing I did want to mention too with the safety issue, Wake County is currently going to be looking at a day shelter program, and if people are sincerely looking for a safe place to go for heat, and that should address some of that issue. So that is a missing gap right now. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your time. It's an important issue. Next, we have the Glenwood South Service Update. Evan Rowley?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Evan Rowley with the City Manager's Office. So I'm here today to give you an update on a topic that I'm sure you've never heard anything about. Just kidding. But seriously, we've heard a lot of conversation recently about concerns. I know I've had these conversations with several of you individually about Glenwood South and efforts that we are taking as a city to mitigate some of the more challenging issues that we see presented in the district. And so we thought that this would be a great opportunity to come and provide you with an update on a lot of the work that we have been doing to address this issue. So so just again, for a bit of context and background, so for the better part of the last couple of years, staff has been looking at ways that we can address, again, some of the more problematic behavior and concerns that we've heard from folks within and adjacent to the district. And you'll see, we, I can't believe it's been almost a year and a half ago, brought before this council and shared with you a set of recommendations that a internal cross-departmental team of staff from representing many departments presented to you as things and actions that we could take to beef up our enforcement, change the physical environment, a lot of different strategies that we were suggesting that we could deploy in the district to, again, mitigate some of the more challenging behavior. And so what this session is going to be about is to provide you with an update on all that work that has been taking place since that time we, you have it referenced in your agenda. You can see the implementation plan and all the departments that were responsible for various tasks. So you're going to hear today updates on all the work that has taken place since then. And so this is the group of departments that have been working so diligently to address the various items that we identified that could sort of rectify and mitigate those issues. And I will, we will be going, you'll hear from each of these, and they'll speak to their respective areas. So we'll go ahead and get started with our Office of Emergency Management and Special Events.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I'm Whitney Schoenfeld with the Office of Emergency Management and Special Events. A bit of context for our office, we oversee the permitting process for special events, but for the purpose of today's presentation, we also oversee some aspects of private use of public spaces, such as pushcart vending, which are your hot dog carts, street performers, if you've ever noticed any saxophone players or bucket drummers along the streets, as well as out, excuse me, as well as outdoor seating, including sidewalk seating in our streeterys. All of these are where private businesses are using the public right-of-way for private benefit. Our also, our office is also a liaison to the nightlife industry, where we work with our downtown businesses to ensure a more vibrant, as well as a safe, community. In everything we do, we strive to balance the needs of all stakeholders, whether people live, work, learn, play, or are visiting the area. So for the implementation plan that was shared in the agenda items that Mr. Rowley referenced, these three points on this slide here were initially assigned to our office. And I'm going to go over each of them, as well as some other ongoing work that our office has been doing. So we all recognize we have some very narrow sidewalks within Glenwood South, which is very different to other parts of the city, such as Fayetteville Street, where there's just a lot more room for people to traverse the streets. While we have those narrow sidewalks, there's definitely no shortage in the amount of people that are within Glenwood South on a typical weekend night. One thing we did to help address the crowded sidewalks was reducing the pushcart vending hours. And then the last item that was assigned to us here was reviewing our online noise complaint form, which, at the time we presented at the September 2021 work session, was just very outdated, and we've since updated that. So in addition to those three items, these, this again, this slide captures much of the ongoing work that our office has done, as well as other departments you're going to hear from here today. So the first thing we did is we established a nightlife steering committee. This is an internal city group composed of staff from our office, as well as other, seven other departments in the city, including police, transportation, planning and development, housing and neighborhoods, solid waste services, and fire. What we do in this group is we meet regularly to share ideas, updates, observations, in order to address anything noteworthy within Glenwood South in a timely manner. And a lot of the updates you'll hear about improvements from other staff today have been brought up as discussion topics during these meetings. We also held a nightlife steering committee night out, so all staff within that committee, as well as additional staff members, including the City Manager's Office, we all met on Glenwood South late at night, from midnight to egress. And I hear there might be some interest from council to do something like that in the near future as well. And that was really just, again, for everyone to truly experience the sights and sounds. I think everybody always hears about it, but it's different hearing it and seeing it yourself as well. We've also increased our participation in neighborhood meetings. We do have a staff member within our office who's a liaison to the Glenwood South Neighborhood Collaborative, where she attends their board meetings to learn about their relevant updates and can also share city updates with that group of individuals as well. In partnership with the Glenwood South Neighborhood Collaborative, we hosted a Keep Glenwood South Safe meeting last year, where staff, again, in our office, police, and transportation, all presented to bar and restaurant managers, residents, as well as other Glenwood South businesses. This same group of staff has also participated in other neighborhood meetings with different condos, the Brooklyn Hill neighborhood, to, again, address issues related to sound, noise, safety, parking. Last time I presented, our office did not oversee the amplified entertainment permitting process, but since presenting in September 2021, those responsibilities now do fall within our office. We've done extensive work to improve that process, first by turning it from paper to an online process. We've also incorporated the police department to be a part of that review process. We're also working to educate all of our businesses, because even if they have an amplified entertainment permit, they're not always familiar with city code and what it truly allows them to do and not to do. So we've done extensive work, again, with educating our businesses to guide them on that correct behavior. Along the lines of education and guiding correct behavior, we've also done work with the Attorney's Office and the Police Department to address confetti and litter and other things like that, that you may notice along Glenwood South. We've educated businesses that were, they're required to keep their sidewalks and gutters in front of their businesses clear of debris, to prevent anything from piling up, and also to prevent things like confetti from washing into our storm drains. And then the last thing on this slide, we're also really excited to announce that we're going to be focusing some of our attention and business engagement efforts on a new education series called Hospitality Industry Preparedness Education, HYPE for short. So this is really being tailored and inspired from New York City's Office of Nightlife, and they have a NITE School, which stands for Nightlife Industry Training and Education. So we're kind of, not necessarily recreating the wheel, but their wheel seems to work well. We regularly attend those virtual webinars and whatnot, so that's something that we want to do here. So this is going to be used as a means to support our nightlife and industry workers by providing them these educational opportunities. Our first HYPE session to get hyped about will actually be later this month, hosted at the AC Marriott, where we're going to focus on emergency preparedness and the pathway to community resilience, so allowing our industry workers to prepare and know how to respond to any critical incidents that could occur, that could occur. One of our goals to do this is really building upon our relationships with our businesses, so we're not only coming to them when something is wrong. We want to be able to show our support and set them up for success, and also gain their compliance by building those relationships. So getting back into the first initial three items that were assigned to us from that implementation plan, the first one being the sidewalk expansion in the 600 block of Glenwood South. So initially, this item was referred to the Transportation and Transit Committee in March of last year. I believe it's listed as a medium-term item on that plan, and it's definitely now considered a much more longer term, as it's long-term and costly in order to expand sidewalks along that path. Transportation staff has shared that they're planning to pilot a tactical urbanism point of view, and where we're piloting that first is at the intersection of Salisbury and Hargette. So if you notice this top photo here, which is an example from Cincinnati, we're essentially, we're not necessarily expanding the sidewalk, but we're bumping the curb out by using art, paint, those vertical delineators such as those flexi-posts. And that will create more space for people to gather while they wait to cross the intersection, and it also increases pedestrian visibility. The bottom photo here is from Kansas City. This is what Transportation referred to as the Cadillac version. So once we would have some successful implementations in different parts of the city, this is something that we could also pursue. So if, again, if these pilot, if the pilot is successful, this is something we would hope to implement along Glenwood South in the meantime, before redevelopment would come along. So on that 600 block, there is development planned for Cornerstone Tavern, so it could at least expand the sidewalk on the west side of the 600 block. And our latest update there is that redevelopment is planned for early 2024. This next slide here goes back to our pushcart vending. So following that September 2021 work session, we did come back to council after direction to, again, help to alleviate some sidewalk congestion. So we proposed to reduce the pushcart operating hours. Previously, they were able to sell and serve until 3:00 AM, and then they had to clean up and be out of Glenwood South, or any area that they're permitted, by 3:30 in the morning. That was reduced to they're only now able to sell and serve up until 1:15 AM, and then they have to clear out by 1:45 AM. And again, those recommendations were approved by council. Again, this was an effort to alleviate sidewalk congestion, noise, and enticing crowds to linger and gather after the bars close at 2:00 AM. First and foremost, we did an education campaign with our permit holders to let them know that this change was now here, and we recently began issuing citations from the Raleigh Police Department, and there have been four citations to date. And then lastly, for me, again, we mentioned reviewing our online noise complaint form. We have made updates to that form, which is accessible to the public. We're mindful of the impact that establishments may have on residents and neighboring businesses when they have amplified entertainment. So that's why this form is available to those that live within or adjacent to the hospitality district. This form and the process is also, again, similar to New York City, where they have a program called MEND, which is mediating establishment and neighborhood disputes. If you see from this form right here, this is just an example. If a resident is to select a business, it pops up with the manager's contact information, where they could reach out directly if they wanted to address something. If they wish to remain anonymous, that's perfectly fine, too. Our office will capture these noise complaint forms and address it with the businesses. This form is available on the city's website. It's also been shared with the Glenwood South Neighborhood Collaborative, residential areas for residents that we frequently talk to, as well as hotels. And with that, I will now introduce Lieutenant Bowen as your next presenter for the Raleigh Police Department.
Easy enough. Hello, how's everybody? All right. I'm here to describe what the Raleigh Police Department has been doing on Glenwood South since our meeting in 2021. At that time, we stated our goals were to find an enhanced enforcement method for outdoor noise. That was at the time our number-one complaint from the community was noise violations coming from outdoor clubs. And, well, generally all the clubs and bars. We were looking at establishing supplemental units to work the Glenwood South area on Friday and Saturday nights to supplement the patrol officers and the hospitality squad, to making sure that there's enough police presence on Glenwood South at that time. We wanted to consider a dedicated hospitality squad. Currently, it's a special project, not a dedicated squad. And we are also looking to review our internal policies in regards to off-duty employment. At the time, in 2021, we saw a vast reduction in officers working off-duty at the bars and nightclubs on Glenwood South, which takes the burden from those, from those positions and puts them on the patrol officers. them on the patrol officers. All right. Like I said, we met with city council here in late 2021. At that time, you can see from this chart, we had 74 noise complaints in a month. Coming out of COVID in early 2021, we were seeing a great, great increase as time went on. At that time, we got together with our district and Chief Patterson, created a letter, basically, educational packet for all the bars and nightclubs, hand-delivered them to everybody. We know the bars and nightclubs have been there for a while, but we started with an educational campaign to readdress what the rules were. And after that point, we had a campaign of verbal warnings and working with the nightclubs when we saw routine violations, letting them know that, look, this is against the law. You can't have these speakers here, or you can't have this the way it is. And we saw a little bit of a decrease there. However, it built back up. Once the education and the warnings had been adequately given, we started enforcement at that time. Both criminal and civil violations were issued to the clubs. Also, we worked with ALE. We worked with all the city departments to work on some of the larger issues, the underage drinking, the over-service of alcohol, and the tents. Tents were a big deal there, generating a lot of complaints. I believe the Planning Department will speak more on that. But with the removal of the tents, you can see that we are currently, at the end of 2022, back to COVID levels of noise complaints on Glenwood South. All right, police presence. Chief Patterson has authorized supplemental units. We have some officers that are shifting schedules from their assigned duties, so that they'll be working Friday and Saturday nights on Glenwood South, so that we do have more police presence. There is also off-duty opportunities for officers to work supplemental shifts, and with certain needs at the time, if there's more patrons on Glenwood South than normal, we can shift those officers at that time. Also, the off-duty policy was reviewed, allowing bar owners to set a pay scale and negotiate that with the officers, and we are seeing now, with that policy change, a return. We're not at full staff of off-duty officers working on Glenwood South, but we're seeing a lot more officers, which takes the burden off the on-duty officers. Vehicular traffic, this is another big issue. If you're trying to drive down Glenwood South on a Friday or Saturday night, that can be very daunting at times, with Uber stopping in the middle of the road to drop off patrons, with cars doing burnouts in the middle of the road and whatnot. At times, it can be daunting. At the end of the night, at the incident commander, the supervisor in charge of Glenwood South, whichever, whoever is in charge of the street of the night, can decide whether or not to block certain roads. That allows patrons to leave the clubs. As Whitney mentioned, the sidewalks can be narrow at times, and when everybody's trying to leave the club at the same time, they can overflow into the streets. When that happens, we have officers block roads and divert traffic. We've also used our hospitality squad and our traffic flex units to enforce noise violations. Some of these noise violations are coming from motor vehicles with modified exhausts and souped-up car stereo systems. We get complaints frequently from residents in the area with car stereos. They're also looking at DWIs. We've been, we've had a handful of DWI projects where we've brought troopers and officers from other jurisdictions into the Glenwood South area, which have been extremely successful. And those squads also monitor motorcycle and car clubs that have come down to Glenwood. These groups will trespass on private property, because they'll find an open parking lot, even if it's not open to the public, which is generating complaints, the trespassing complaint, which is there. And they're also generating the noise and the careless and reckless driving, which I mentioned earlier, with the car stereos and the burnouts in the middle of the street. Okay, violent crime. In 2021 and 2022, if you look in the bottom right, mostly from the hospitality squad, we've been focusing on getting guns out of the areas around Glenwood South. Mixing guns and alcohol is not a good idea. We don't want those guns to make their way to Glenwood South itself, so the officers working the areas around the parking lots and the perimeter around Glenwood South have been extremely successful. The two years total is 206 firearms seized. That's either concealed weapons violations or possession by a felon, or a multitude of events where we've been able to seize the guns. The other stats you can see on the slide, simple assaults and disorderly conducts are down, a slight rise in aggravated assaults and, I'm sorry, communicating threats. The ones in yellow, though, the reason why those are highlighted is that is from the activity of our officers. Those numbers are generated from officers that are out there trying to find the problems before they occur. The drug violations, the felony drug violations, and the misdemeanor drug violations, the driving while impaired, the concealed weapons, and the illegal weapons. That's directly from the officers, mostly in the perimeter, finding the drugs and guns before they get to Glenwood itself. Recently, we've looked at the way the city provides their opinion to the ABC Commission when it comes to ABC permitting. The city receives a government opinion form every time someone wants an ABC permit, and the Planning Department will make sure that the facility that they want to open up in is safe, and the police department will do an investigation to make sure the applicant doesn't have the criminal history that would negate them from being able to hold the permit. However, we noticed that there was a breakdown in the fact that you could have a few clubs that all have life safety violations attached to them and request a permit from the state for another ABC permit at a brand-new place without fixing the problems that you have at your existing bars or nightclubs. Working together with planning, we've patched that hole, and now we're providing that information to the ABC Commission, so that they have a better picture of what they're approving before it gets approved. We can't say whether or not they'll approve it or not, but we want to give them the information. All right, so from this point on, we're still looking to establish a full-time hospitality squad instead of having a special project. We need to find a means to improve noise violation enforcement. Up and down Glenwood South, every establishment's different how we can attempt to get noise violation at each place, so we need to find a better means to do that. We are trying to find new ways to fill vacancies at off-duty employment positions, trying to get those out to the officers and trying to get more off-duty officers down to Glenwood South. We're still working with transportation. We have tried a few different methods, Uber Zone or whatnot, and at this point, it's currently not working. People are still parking in those areas. I'm sure transit will get to that. But we're still trying to be innovative and find new ways. And we are currently using crime analysis data every week to provide to the officers working Glenwood South to make sure they know where the hotspots are, which either, not just bars and nightclubs, but which sections are people hanging out in? What are the violations that they're seeing? So we can prevent, we can get officers standing in those places, so we can prevent more crimes so they don't occur. All right. So now, we have transportation.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council. Paul Calm, one of the Assistant Transportation Directors here with the City of Raleigh. So a couple of areas that I'm going to be touching on here, the first two bullet points is intersection and pedestrian safety improvements, and then neighborhood and corridor parking enforcement. Then my colleague, Steve Halsey, will be touching on the cleanliness and downtown, the Team Downtown Services. So we're going to touch on the intersection pedestrian safety improvements. So we've gone out and installed crosswalks and multiway stops at Johnson and West Street. So just to give you a little bearing, that's where the Publix grocery store is, so kind of on the back corner of that. So we noticed, once the public came online, we had a lot of pedestrian need, basically from the apartments, the Raleigh Housing Authority. So we went out there, installed crosswalks and multiway stops there at that location. And then, of course, with the Smoky Hollow development that came in, we installed a traffic and pedestrian signal there at Johnson and Glenwood Avenue. So that's been done in the last year, year and a half. So that, again, has helped with pedestrian safety and just movement through that intersection. And we've worked with our partners at Duke Energy and increased the streetlight wattage, and also, it don't have on here, we worked with our Parks and Recs and Cultural Resources to kind of trim back some of the trees, which, some of the vegetation on some of the side streets here. So definitely gotten a lot of positive feedback with the increased streetlight wattages through the Glenwood South area. And then, of course, the Downtown Pedestrian Improvement Plan, this is a partnership with NC DOT that y'all probably have been hearing in the news with no right on reds here recently. That's something we've been actively working with NC DOT on. We've reduced the speed limits down to 25 miles an hour. This includes the Glenwood South area. Of course, we're working on the no right on reds. That's currently in installation, working with a contractor now over the next couple of months to do that. And then we installed the leading pedestrian enables, which, if you stand at a signalized intersection and you get the walk symbol, basically it gives the pedestrian two or three seconds to get out in the street, be more visible to the drivers there. So that has been a positive thing for us. And then, of course, we've been working with the scooter companies on looking at dedicated scooter corrals up and down the Glenwood Avenue area and on the side streets there. And we reduced the speed limits, so currently 20 miles an hour, basically anywhere through Raleigh. Once you get into the Glenwood South area, that basically, its geofence goes down to 10 miles an hour, so that's been a positive thing for us. And currently, we're working with our communications team. Of course, this is what I consider a continued improvement in this area, working with the Communications Department on just increasing our signage around the scooter corral locations just to make our visitors aware of where those locations are, so that's something we're working on also. And then one thing that's not on here, we also went in and refreshed all of our high-visibility crosswalks along Glenwood South from Hillsborough Street up to P Street, so that was an effort, again, that we've done over the last year, year and a half. Parking behavior changes, so these are a few things on the parking side. So the top right is additional wayfinding signage that we have included up and down the Glenwood Avenue corridor. And kind of picture yourself going north on Glenwood out of town, we really tried to target that side of the road for folks basically heading out of town, and I know Councilmember Ford with the Glenwood Brooklyn neighborhood, trying to bring visibility and awareness to the visitors, hey, there's public private decks along Harrington and West Street. So we've really tried to go out and strategically place the wayfinding parking signs and just some of the, you know, private parking decks that are in the area, or the Smoky Hollow District, the Powerhouse District, the 510, and the 22 Glenwood Avenue. So that's where, again, this is just a snapshot, we've got several of these up and down Glenwood Avenue on the top right. And then what we did on the bottom right there is, when I touched on earlier, with the Glenwood Brooklyn neighborhood, which is north of P Street, so a lot of concerns and complaints from the neighborhood. So we've got our traditional parking signs that are probably half this size here, that basically tell, you know, visitors this is a residential permit zone. So what we did is, we went on all the side streets in that neighborhood and basically increased the signage here to let visitors know, hey, you're entering a residential permit zone, and those hours specifically for this one is 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., so anything in those hours, visitors cannot park there. So this is just on the, again, trying to change some of the parking behavior that I think has helped. Next thing, just some updates on kind of where we are with neighborhood and corridor parking enforcement. So we're working on a new dedicated night shift. This is kind of new for us. Right now, we've got one supervisor and two ambassadors. We've got those positions filled. We're currently in the process of actually interviewing for the other two ambassador positions, so that's something currently that we're working on. That shift is from 4:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., Tuesday through Saturday night. And then after the 1:00 a.m., basically, we're working very close with RPD on those extended hours, and they've been a great partner with us on helping, you know, with citations and things of that nature in the neighborhoods here. And again, their primary focus has been, you know, the residential permit zone, kind of quality-of-life issues, I would call it, again, through the Glenwood South area and north and west of that. Next is just kind of a snapshot here of the parking enforcement from a violation standpoint. So from July the 1st of last year to February 28th, you can kind of see approximately 4,900 citations in the Glenwood South. 1,057 of those have been in the residential permit zone in Glenwood South, and I'll just say, it's not up here. We went back to look at some data on this, and we've got less than 10% repeat violators. So that tells us we're having a lot of new people circulate through these communities and then the Glenwood South, so just kind of wanted to point that out. Our current parking citation fees here are $20 for non-safety-related expired meters, things of that nature. Then we have $30 for safety-related fire hydrants, no parking, residential permit zones, parking in crosswalks, things of that nature. So that's just kind of a snapshot on the parking. And then one thing, I just wanted to go ahead and daylight here, more will be coming from Budget and then Matthew Currie, our parking manager here on the April 10th budget meeting. We're going to be introducing maybe some changes to our citation fees. So again, I'm just going to touch on these. Again, a lot more information coming at the April 10th, but we're going to look at maybe making some buckets with some of our citations. So let's say ones that are less impactful, kind of less impactful violations, again, like expired meters. We may look at, currently, it's 20 today. Maybe if someone gets a ticket and pays it within five days, we may drop that down to 15. So that's just kind of a snippet of maybe what you'll see at the April 10th here. Of course, more impactful violations, we're going to look at proposing some options to increase those violations, again, for crosswalks, fire hydrant, safety-related violations. Again, the goal of this is to change people's behavior out there, and again, kind of touch on the quality-of-life violations that we're seeing out here. And I think Whitney had touched on earlier, we're going to look at using paint and kind of vertical delineators to better delineate some of those trouble spots that we're seeing down through the Glenwood South area, again, to bring more visibility to pedestrians and protect those. And then one other option that we'll probably bring to the April 10th is, we'll be looking at some options of, does the council have any appetite on looking at increasing any fines specifically in the Glenwood South? So again, that's something that we'll be daylighting at the April 10th council meeting. So more to come on that. Matthew Currie will actually be presenting on that, so just, again, be on the lookout for that. And that's all I've got as far as my presentation. I'm going to turn this over to Steve Halsey, my colleague here, to touch on cleanliness and Team Downtown Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Again, Steve Halsey with Transportation, specifically oversee the transportation maintenance operations within the department. Here today to spend a few minutes highlighting some of the improvements that our Team Downtown has made in the Glenwood South area. For those of you that don't know, Team Downtown is a group of 19 staff members that are specifically dedicated to the cleanliness and minor maintenance items within the downtown. So as the nightlife and crowds have returned to Glenwood South, so too have the requests for additional services related to cleanliness, infrastructure maintenance. Prior to the pandemic, Team Downtown provided street cleaning only three to five days a week on Glenwood South, and this has proven to be too little, as that nighttime population has continued to grow in recent months. In August 2022, Team Downtown, in collaboration with the neighborhood, completed installation of dual artistic trash and recycling receptacles at 15 sites on the blocks immediately to the east and west of Glenwood. the east and west of Glenwood. This has proven to be an effective way to decrease the loose trash in those areas by supplementing the existing receptacles along Glenwood. Additionally, Team Downtown in November 2022 power washed the entirety of all the sidewalks along Glenwood Avenue between P Street and Hillsborough Street. This is the first time that effort has happened on Glenwood and we're very happy with the Moving on, late 2022 and early 2023, again, in partnership with the Glenwood South Neighborhood Collaborative, Downtown Raleigh Alliance and our Urban Forestry Division, City crews completed the installation of 10 flexible permeable pavement tree pit pilots along the 200 and 500 blocks of Glenwood South. These pilots will be monitored over time for sustainability, performance of the product and overall health of the trees. Additionally, the city, the Neighborhood Collaborative and DRA piloted a gravel and turf grass solution for tree pits in other areas of Glenwood South. And again, we'll be monitoring that pilot for sustainability over time, overall health of the trees and product performance. So moving on to the big one, in early 2023, Team Downtown was able to shift to a seven-day-a-week, twice-per-day litter and cleanliness service for Glenwood South. In addition, Team Downtown will be able to provide annual sidewalk power washing with spot treatments as needed along that same corridor. This effort and increase in the level of the service was made possible by our share of the MSD tax increase that was approved earlier this fiscal year. All the efforts to date and along with the new service schedule, we feel has led to a significant improvement in the overall cleanliness in the Glenwood South area, as evidenced by comments we've gotten from the neighborhood as well as the local businesses. That's all I have as far as transportation is concerned. So with that, I will turn it over to my colleagues with Planning and Development.
Hey, Madam Mayor, City Council, Brian Robinson, Chief Building Code Official, Planning and Development, City of Raleigh. We were brought into this in order to assist primarily from the safety aspects brought to our attention by the RPD Fire Department, first responders, basically the sheer numbers of people that were occupying these facilities and how they were using them. Just to put it in perspective, these areas were designed for 100 to 200 people and there were 2,000 to 3,000 showing up. Oh, I apologize. Got it? There you go. Sorry. So with the visual evidence and obvious concern from the city, we went out and working closely with the attorneys, we very, we identified these properties in the first section there as the primary area of focus. These outdoor areas were being used in a way they weren't designed. And actually, we were able to determine that there were illegal uses of these outdoor areas as nightclubs. And that's a different use than a bar in the building code. So once we identified them, we sent out the notices of violation and we've had great success and we actually were able to close down all those facilities, those outdoor areas. And that greatly assisted in the obvious, the noise and the safety concerns at that time. But now, and I'm happy to say that the only business that hasn't returned with a registered design professional to try to reopen it this time is the 616 building and that owner could come in at any time to reopen. We realize these businesses have a right to exist. We just want to make sure it's done properly and safely. Now, moving forward, what we're doing is we are going to permit all these outdoor areas as either bars or restaurants to the building code, that is identical occupancy, set up the same way when it comes to egress, things of that nature. And we're currently working on all of those addresses except 616 with those registered design professionals to do so. The tents that the officer mentioned earlier, those are a problem. It's not very practical to look at a tent from the building code point of view because it just can't stand up to 115 mile an hour ultimate wind zone or snow loads or any of that. So they cannot actually operate a temporary tent from the building code. Now, they can have a temporary tent, but it actually should get a fire code permit. And because, not primarily for structural reasons, but they identify the use of that tent and tell them that yes, we're going to have a band and maybe 2,000 people so that the emergency responders will have the availability to make sure we don't have 2,000 to 3,000 pouring out into the street all at one time. So hopefully that together will work well. And moving forward, once again, now the special events, folks have done a wonderful job with this new entertainment permit. It's called Hospitality District Entertainment Permit. That is going to be the real tool that controls this moving forward. They will, they will have to apply. We're not saying that you can never have a stage or a band. We're saying that you have to do it properly. So when they apply for that permit, then we'll be able to identify if they need to go to zoning, if they need to go to fire, who they need to notify. And they get those permits and that they have all the rules for how much noise and moving forward, how we control that. And believe it or not, that's the end of my presentation. And I think that's, if there's no further question to me, I'd be glad to turn this over to Evan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, that concludes the presentation. As you can see, it's been a really intensive and comprehensive effort to try to address all the facets of life in Glenwood South, but trying to do it in a way that doesn't detract from the vibrancy that I think we all want, but making sure that there's safety and security for those visiting the district and, you know, peace and comfort and safety for those that live in and around the districts as well. So happy to take any questions that you have.
Okay. Councilmember Melton.
Mine are easy, so I figured I'd kick it off. Just a couple of observations. I think the scooter corrals have been a great success. I've often taken a scooter and if I'm down on the Glenwood area, I've noticed that there are a lot of parking areas, so it's convenient. And there doesn't seem to be an issue with scooters clogging up sidewalks and all the things that we were hearing before. I think one thing is they don't stand out very well and they're also not very pretty. But it sounds like we're working on that. And I know that part of the Public Realm Study we got from the Downtown Raleigh Alliance was to use some public art as space designation. So I think we could maybe paint the ground around it or something, but maybe work on that. I loved the tactical urbanism idea for the bumping out the curbs. Councilmember Patton leaned over and said, "That's your favorite word." And she's only been here a few months, so the fact that she knows that means I've said it a lot, so I'm glad that we're working on it. And then the last thing is the push carts. I'm interested to see what impact that hours of reduction has had on some of the intended, I guess, reasons for making that change. I was the only person on council at the time that voted against it. I wasn't against necessarily looking at the changes to the hours of operation. I had asked for it to go to committee mostly because I am sensitive to the fact that most of our push cart operators are small, mostly minority-owned businesses. And I have been contacted by a number of them, I guess because I was the only no vote, with ongoing concerns about the impact on their livelihoods. So I'd just like to maybe get some follow-up information on what impact that's had. And I do know that we do have a text change coming to us at a regular council meeting in the future about some mobile retail and some food trucks. And so maybe there may be an opportunity to look at this push cart issue again when we have that discussion.
Any other questions? Mayor Protem.
Just one question around cleanliness. As we're working to ensure Glenwood South is clean and proper and great, are we ensuring that we're not neglecting other parts of downtown? And do we have the staff to ensure that?
Yeah, so one of the benefits of the additional funds we received with the MSD tax increase this fiscal year was the ability to bring on four new full-time positions to help supplement. So the way that we were able to schedule everything, to answer your question, no, nothing's been neglected. These are on top of our existing services.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I guess my comment is, and this probably is for you, Paul. I know that we've talked about increasing the fines and you're going to bring that back. Certainly want to keep it with a lens focused on deterring the behavior. So I don't know that reducing it, if they pay it in five days, because then it's almost like the cost of what they pay to go to a deck. And so just looking at some ways to really grab folks' attention. And I, you know, understand you to say, I understood you to say that they're not allowed to repeat violators, but I think if, you know, you're paying a $500 fine or your car's getting towed, the word to get out, whether you're a one-time offender or not, so.
Yeah, we'll be sure to take that back from consideration, bring some options to the council.
Councilmember Patton, did you have a question?
I can come up with one. I did have one quick question. I wondered about the data in the chart that RPD presented around the noise complaints. I was curious how that paired up with the switch to the online noise violation form, like if this data are only complaints from that online form or they coming in in other ways as well?
No, these are just complaints that came in through emergency communications.
Got it, okay. So then I guess my follow-up question is how has the uptick, uptake been on the online noise complaint form?
I would say the trend has been similar to RPD's chart where there has been a lower amount of noise complaints coming in. Again, we are trying to push that form out so people know that it is a tool for them. I can't say I know how many people are aware of it, but the people that do fill it out, it is a lower trend.
Have we shared that with the Glenwood South Cooperative?
Yes. And Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, you all posted it on your webpage, too? Yeah.
Councilmember Harrison.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone who's been working on this. It's fabulous to see this all-team approach, you know, a variety of departments. There's obviously a lot of different activities we can do to continue to make this area really a wonderful place to live, to visit. And so as just representing District D, I just want to thank you all. And, you know, we had a conversation this morning with neighbors near this area. You know, this continues to be a hotspot of sometimes concern, but I think these are the types of initiatives that will really make a difference. So again, thank you. And for anyone who'd like to go to Glenwood South together as council, I'll be sending an invite, so.
I'm down there all the time. Join me.
Yeah, you're going with Jonathan.
And they're done that. One thing I love is the art that is featured up here. And I think we also mentioned asphalt art. There is federal funding available for that, so that's something I think we really need to look at very closely. Can really make a difference in terms of safety, but also beautifying the neighborhood. And I cannot wait to see what we come up with for this Salisbury Street Hargit. That, yeah, that needs to be incredible. Anything else? It's been a long work session with a lot of information.
Two of them. Two days in a row.
Yes. Okay. Well, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for being here.